Let me call to order the, what am I at? March 4th, 2020 Committee Meeting of the Hall. For council, would you please arise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me begin by announcing we have two add-ons. One's for zoning and one is a little presentation about Go-Forth. We will put them in later on. I'll start with the resolution. You have it?
I do.
You're reading it?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
This is for, to apologize. Apologize as we don't have the plaque, but we'll get it to you.
Tonight we have a, tonight we have a resolution recognizing Janice E. Lee for 11 years of dedicated service to the Borough of Pottstown. Whereas Janice E. Lee has served the Borough of Pottstown as a dedicated employee since 2009, and whereas during her career with the Borough, she served as the appointed Borough Treasurer and Authority Bookkeeper. And whereas for the past 11 years, Janice has worked in the position of Director of Finance, and during that time, she served our residents and customers regarding implementation and execution of annual Borough of Pottstown and Borough, Pottstown Borough Authority budgets, five-year capital improvement projects, taxing millages, water, sewer, and trash building concerns, water service shut-offs, fee schedules, in order that residents could receive the best level of customer service possible from the Borough. And whereas Janice's presence in Borough Hall will be truly missed by the people that have worked with her, now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Mayor and Town Council, that Janice E. Lee is officially recognized for the outstanding service she has provided the Borough of Pottstown through 11 years of employment, and further that she has extended best wishes for a happy and well-deserved retirement. Adopted at Pottstown Borough Hall, 100 East High Street, this fourth day of March 2020, signed by Dan Weand, Council President, and Justin Keller, Borough Manager. Congratulations. Infrastructure.
I've seen your package.
In the pack. Got enough. Economic Development and Business Liaison, Ms. Peggy Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. It was great to see you all last week. So I don't have a lot more to report from our joint meeting with the school district, but one of the things that came out of most recent downtown pioneers meeting, which happens on the first Monday of the month with the business leaders within the downtown and some of the building owners, we did learn that for the first time this year, which is something that's been brewing for two years, there will be a jewelryed craft market, which will be in the downtown. It will be the first weekend in May. I can't remember whether it's the day the ponies run or the goats run, the next day. So it's the second or third of May?
Goats.
It's the goats. Okay, so the goats would be the third, May 3rd. Isn't this silly how we remember things? So the goats run at Sly Fox, as you all are aware, and the carousel always has a nice Kentucky Derby event on that day. But also, this jewelryed event, it actually is being headed by Deana Reeves, who is of Delia &amp; Dean Downtown, and Joan Decret, who has been watching us, wanted to do a market in one of the buildings. We were able to connect the two of them. Joan has recently retired. She's very interested in Pottstown, so they will be having this jewelryed market. You can look up Clover Markets if you're really interested. It's something along those lines. So it will be high-end recycled furniture, as well as artisans, that will be set up in the lot that the alley is located at. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you.
Wait, one other thing. I've forgotten, sorry. We're having a downtown event called Coming Out of Hibernation. J.J. Radigans and Pottstown United Brewing have worked together to create a beer creation called Pottstown High PA, and that will be served that weekend at multiple locations. So come out for March 20th, so that we can all welcome spring to Pottstown.
Okay. Transportation. Anyone?
We did not meet.
No, no meeting.
No meeting, okay. Ordinance Review Committee, Counselor Profskow. And Efficient Methods Committee, Vice President Lebedinsky?
No meeting.
No meeting. Under the Boards, Emergency Services Reports. Chief?
Well, everyone. So for the month of February, we were pretty busy again. We had 92 fire responses, and one of them was a significant event. We had $6,000 damage to a home up on Hanover Street. You know, the fire company responded pretty quick after fire, after quick after, it couldn't be too big. Our EMS did 332 calls for the month. But I want everyone to know that we're getting into that season for recreational burning. Please look at the website. If you have any questions, call me and let me know, so we can curtail any of the complaints for the recreational burning as the weather starts getting us.
Okay.
That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Human Relations, Ms. Levin Gooden.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, and Madam Mayor. March is Women's History Month that highlights the contributions of women to events in history and society. It also coincides with the International Women's Day on March the 8th, which is a worldwide event with a human rights theme, highlighting the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements and contributions made by women. It is also Irish-American Heritage Month to honor the achievements and contributions of Irish immigrants and their descendants living in the United States. It also coincides with St. Patrick's Day, which is on March the 17th, which is the Irish National Holiday. At the Commission's February meeting, the Commissioners approved the 2020 goals, and that's to continue to expand in three areas: the relationship with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, the education program, and also the relationships with organizations in the Borough and surrounding affected communities. The Commission's March Meeting will be held on Thursday, March the 19th, at 6:00 p.m. in Council Chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Wonderful. Okay, the next two items, the Library and the Land Bank, we'll hear those reports on Monday evening. Is the Ricketts Community Center, Counselor Kirkland not being here. Do you have anything?
I can give you, I have something. Okay, councilors, you may have seen the email from the Ricketts Center. Just a little update of what's going on, so I'm just going to skim through this email here. The weight room has attendance, and it's been steady. The building is getting ready for homeless shower program, because that was a new one. I didn't know about that one. And they have a steady dance, soccer, and karate at the Ricketts Center right now. So it'll look like that they are having some, you know, activities and stuff going on at the Ricketts Center. So yeah, so if you want to read it a little bit more in detail, just send your email.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you. And while I have you, how about the Pottstown School District?
Okay, so I was at the Leadership Tri-County Professionals Dinner, banquet, for my dear walking school bus buddy, Misha. She was one of the honorees there, and I got to the, to the school board meeting late, so. But I want to bring to your attention that we are going back to Harrisburg. Power is going back to Harrisburg, March 23rd. So I wanted to let everybody know that. There's more to come. I will, you know, you probably see some information out, like in emails, there's some certain people that we contacted regarding that, so. Well, fair funding, sorry. Okay.
Very good. Mayor's Report. Mayor Hendry.
Welcome to March. We had a lot of meetings and collaborations this month. In addition, I tried, excuse me, I tried J.J. Radigans for the first time, so I have to say, I'm willing to put my hat on this, that they have the best fries in Pottstown, if you haven't tried them yet. And I may say Montgomery County, although I haven't had a lot of fries in Montgomery County, but I have to say, their fries are pretty amazing. If you haven't been to J.J. Radigans, please go check it out. They're open, I think, seven days a week, which is nice, because a lot of places are closed until Thursday in Pottstown. And then Trinita and Dawn and I went to the Seussacle this weekend, and if you haven't been, I highly suggest that you go. Those kids are extremely talented. Matt Green's son, Ray Rose's son, Will Smith's daughter, I mean, an amazing production. So there are two more, I think, three more showings, one on the 6th, one on the 7th, and I think they're doing a special one on Thursday for sensory and children, and I think that is, that is actually a free event on Thursday.
No.
It's not a free event.
It's $5?
It is $5.
Uh huh.
There you go, so. He knows what he's talking about. Thank you for correcting that. For more information, go to PottstownSchools.org. And coming up, there's, we're getting back into the months of where everything is packed into the weekends, and everything's on the same day, but save the date for March 28th. Reading has challenged Pottstown to a community cleanup, and March 28th, from 10 to 12, we are going to have, we're going to have an entire community cleanup. Hobart's Run is putting together a list for us to sign up. You'll pick a spot, and then you'll be responsible for that area. Reading has boasted that they will have 500 volunteers, so I would like to match that. In addition, they will all be wearing superhero costumes. You can go as whatever superhero you would like, you can make one up, but please come out and let's beat Reading at the community cleanup. And we're starting the, I'm going to start off the Ward Wars Pilot Program to get things started. I promised Amy Wolf and Amy Francis for the Go-Forth Festival that we will have relay races on the 4th of July in the park. So that while this is part of a larger initiative, I have an assignment for all of you, council. And I've already assigned your colors, so you're going to have a color. I highly suggest that you recruit at, like, 14 people to be on your team for competing in relay races on the 4th of July. We'll probably have like three, like tug-of-war, sack races, et cetera. Pick someone to be a team captain, so you guys don't have to do a lot of work. We'll get t-shirts made, et cetera. So I expect that we have someone representing each ward for these relay races on the 4th of July. The winner will be announced at, I guess before fireworks, at the Go-Forth Festival, and the winner will also be awarded a undetermined amount of points that will be counted for the year to the larger initiative of competing borough-wide for our Ward Wars. So Ward 1 is blue, Ward 2 is yellow, 3, green, Ward 4 is orange, Ward 5 is red. I know you want it to be burgundy, but you're getting red. Ward 6 is pink, and Ward 7 is purple. And so I don't have a great map, and of course, I printed out one that didn't have great shading. So it'll kind of look like this. I'll have a nice, bigger one up and colored in, but basically picture, you're going to be representing your wards and doing relay races to unite the community.
Okay.
You guys okay with that?
Yes.
Do we have a choice?
No, you do not, and you may want to start a t-shirt competition, t-shirt design competition in your ward, so that we can have t-shirts made for the relay races.
When is the deadline for the t-shirts, Madam Mayor?
Oh, that's a good, I would say, mm, oh, May 15th?
Okay.
Does that give us enough time?
I think so.
All right. And that's it?
Okay. Well, Borough Manager.
All right. I heard some groans in the back when she mentioned the best fries in Pottstown, because I just looked down, and I saw that we have the McDonald's land development application on the agenda tonight. But anyway, I wanted to take a minute to follow up from the last meeting where we had a resident come in on, from Hale Street, to complain about a water runoff issue from one of his neighbor's property. I just wanted to let you know that we did send our inspectors to go out there and follow up. They were claiming that there is an illegal sump pump that was discharging onto the rear of his property that was causing some ponding and some wet areas. We did send inspectors out there. We did not find any evidence of a sump pump outlet pipe in that location, nor did we see any signs of erosion or ponding water at that time either. Because we did not find any evidence of the water runoff, it's really hard for, difficult for the Borough to do anything about it. Had there been erosion and standing water, there might have been something in our ordinances that could have forced compliance in that, in that regard. We also took a look at historical and aerial photos to make sure that for any excavations of this alleged drainage pipe, we didn't find any. The neighbor was gracious enough to talk to us, an elderly couple who claimed that they only had one sump pump connection, and it went out to the front. So there really wasn't a lot that we, that we found there. We did note that the property is situated lower than many of the properties around it, and that in 2018 and 19 have been some of the wettest years on record. So that could be a potential explanation as well. So I just wanted to keep everyone updated on that citizen comment from last month. An update, the Pottstown Television Show, Our Town, Our Boroughs, will be featured on PCN TV on March 5th, so everyone tune in to check out the series. And thanks to everyone, all of our partners and the councilors that helped do the filming and interviewing for that show. Also got good news, the Pottstown Criterion Bus Bike Race was selected as a state championship race. So we're going to have the state championship race here in Pottstown, which is expected to bring 100 additional riders to town that day. And then also, as some have mentioned, we had a joint meeting with the school board on the 27th. We reviewed the ULI Plan, Final Plan Presentation. We also went over a presentation showing our walk-bike education efforts, and we talked about bike remediation efforts, including three properties that either are or will be demolished in the Borough this year due to life safety issues. Hay gave an update, and we had a discussion on the threshold for taxing body initiated assessment challenges. That's it.
Very good. Okay, where are we? Five, six, seven, eight. We have a presentation about the Comcast franchise. Brian Jeter, welcome.
Wherever you're coming from.
Wherever.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, councilors, residents of the Borough. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to discuss the Comcast cable franchise renewal. As Council President said, my name is Brian Jeter. I'm the Senior Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs for Comcast Freedom Region. While I handle a wide range of government regulatory matters for the company throughout Bucks, Montgomery County, and small portions of Berks, I'm obviously focused tonight on the cable renewal with the Borough and provide a brief update, a community investment update for all of you. As it's been some time since the company's probably been in front of this governing body, our prior renewal was almost 10 years ago, so a lot has happened in technology, as all you can imagine, over the last decade. So first, let me discuss the cable franchise renewal. As you may know, cable television franchise agreements are governed by federal law, also known by the Cable Act or the Telecommunications Act, rather than state and some municipal laws that are negotiated with the municipality and the incumbent cable operator or operators. You'll hear terms as local franchising authorities, which is all of you, the Borough of Pottstown, and the cable operators work together via the provisions of the Act to make every reasonable effort to identify and meet the cable-related needs of the community, keeping in mind the technical and financial cost of meeting such needs. The Borough Manager, Solicitor, and myself have worked cooperatively over the last year to ensure those needs are reasonably met through this process, and certainly with the document and the agreement that's presented to you this evening. I'd also be remiss not to recognize Gus Tellis, who's behind us from PCTV, who was also a working member of the group, had some great input of what's happened over the last 10 years, and certainly under his leadership of PCTV was an important factor in all of our discussions as we move forward. I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have about the renewal, certainly answer anything that I can, but also we just want to highlight a few things, as it has been some time since Comcast has been in front of you, as I mentioned earlier. So just a few items that I think are important to the Borough, and certainly to the greater Pottstown area. From a customer experience and investment perspective, you may already know, or interested to know, that earlier this year, we opened our newest and our fourth Xfinity Retail Store in Montgomery County up at the Upland Shopping Center. This 3,200-square-foot facility or center allows our customers to directly interact with the latest Comcast Xfinity products and services. It's part of our multi-year strategy to transform your experience as customers, or we hope to gain you as a customer. The store provides new and existing customers a place to learn how to optimize our products, certainly have a hands-on opportunity for those. The store is designated or designed strategically to have our certain products right there at your fingertips, Xfinity Mobile, Xfinity Home, our X1 platform, and so on. The store also has an ability, like many of our stores throughout our footprint, have a time-saving feature. So you have a self-serve payment option or bill option there at kiosk. You have a queue system, so you don't have to wait in line like you did in the old days, where you could search, roam the store, use our products, and then certainly you get called up as, as, as we're ready to address your customer service needs. So we think that that's an important investment. As you know, we've been here as Comcast, and certainly a prior operator, for almost three decades, if not a little bit longer. We have a presence in this part of the county. We want to continue to maintain that presence, but at the same time, we wanted to create an experience that's similar to all of our Xfinity stores throughout the entire Comcast footprint nationwide, but specifically here in the greater Philadelphia area, and specific to Pottstown residents. And we thought it was an important improvement that was much needed compared to our old facility when she made her road. You may be interested to learn just from our customer experience that more than 70% of our customers, hopefully you do as well, interact with us digitally, so we certainly push for that. We think that that's a much better interaction. You are able to do those things through our My Xfinity app, so there's a variety of services that you can do. You can check on your cable boxes, your modems, the signal quality in your home, all from your fingertips, from Android and/or from your iPhone, and there's a variety of other things that you can do using that, and we think that that's a win-win for everybody. I'm happy to talk about services and products. I don't want to necessarily bore you with all those, but the transformation of the digital age, if you will, and the products that we serve, your residents, our customers, in a 10-year period, has just transformed tremendously. So we hope that your residents, and certainly our customers, existing or new, have the opportunity to use those services, and we're appreciative of their business, not only from a residential perspective, but certainly as business customers. Speaking of business investment, you may or may not be aware, but we certainly have made strategic investments in greater Pottstown, if you will, to bring more fiber, more connectivity to the Borough and to the surrounding communities. As you continue to grow your business sector, and that's, that's a plus for us, obviously, we want to make sure that all your businesses have the ability to communicate to the outside world in 2020, and we're proud of that investment. We'll continue to take a look at those opportunities and make those investments, and working with collaboration with PAD and the Chamber, and certainly Mr. Keller and the Borough Manager's Office. We're really excited about looking at those opportunities as the Borough expands their business footprint. Next, let me just talk quickly about community impact and investments that we've made. So we have one of our largest nation program, most successful internet adoption program called Internet Essentials for low-income households in the county. We've expanded that eligibility more than 3,000 households across the country, including those that are households with people with disabilities, so they're on some type of assistance. We've expanded the program. The program is relatively simple. It's, if you qualify under the conditions of the program, you get internet service, our basic level service for $9.95 a month. For those that are on free reduced lunch programs, whether you're in broker or private charter or public school, you are all eligible for that. We've expanded that, as I just mentioned, to those on assistance or people with disabilities, so we've broadened the program to reach. We've had really good success here with the school district of Pottstown and neighboring school districts here. The Borough has been helpful in distributing materials and letting residents know that this program is available, and it'll continue to be available going forward, so we're excited about that opportunity. We've had several students, not only here in the, in the, in the, in Pottstown High School, Upper Pottsgrove and the surrounding high schools participate in our Leaders and Achievers Scholarship Program. So program operates a little bit differently than maybe some programs. We're really focused on community service first, and then academics second, if you will. But we've had, we've, over the 10 or 12 years, we've had a few dozen of your students and your residents and your community participate and get those scholarships, and we're proud of that. Lastly, in one of our signature programs, from a community investment perspective, is working in the greater Pottstown area, well, what we call National Day of Service, which is Comcast Cares Day. We are certainly open to suggestions. I wish it was a little bit later for your challenge in community cleanup, as the mayor articulated a few minutes ago. Our program is the first Saturday in May, excuse me, where our employees pick the project, so. So our Pottstown employees here pick community partners. So we've done things as the Alt House Arboretum, the Coldworkdale Railroad, we've done things in Boyer Town, we've partnered with the Y here a number of years ago, and we're open to those ideas and suggestions. You can certainly get them to me, and we can vet those ideas with our employees here. And then lastly, what I think is as important as our investment to the new store, is our operational investment here in the borough. And what I mean by that is that, as I said earlier, we've been on Schumaker Road, I think, for two and a half decades, give or take. Most of our employees in that building have been here the entire time. So we have the most tenured group of employees in Montgomery County that actually work right down the road, and we're proud of that. We, on average, have about 80 to 100 employees in that facility. We are going to continue in that facility. We consider that facility a hub for us. So we've invested over about a three- to five-year window, about a quarter of a million dollars, doing internal improvements in the building. We are working on making additional external improvements in the building over the next couple of years, so that is on our plan. We understand that that's important to the borough as a whole, and we certainly recognize that, and we appreciate the suggestions and the recommendations from Mr. Keller and Mr. Gardner about that issue. So it is top of mind for us. They just don't happen overnight, as you can imagine. But more than half of our employees actually live in the borough that work in that facility, or at least live a stone's throw away. And that's something to be proud of, too. So, it serves as a major hub, it's a technology hub for us. And what I mean by that is that that Pottstown Operational Center feeds about a dozen to 17 municipalities in the greater Pottstown footprint, what we call Pottstown footprint. So again, it's a vital piece of infrastructure for us, and we're certainly proud to be there, and we're going to continue to be there. So with that, again, I'm happy to answer any questions. We appreciate the working relationship that we have with the borough, and I'll open up any questions that anybody may have. Thank you for your time.
Did you say you might be, you know, offering a fiber optic internet that's kind of similar to, as Verizon's FiOS in the future?
So, we actually, we have, we do have, from a business services perspective, so if you're a business owner that lives in the borough, you are more likely able to get fiber connectivity, as opposed to a hybrid approach of what the current infrastructure is today. So we've made some investments in certain parts of greater Pottstown, if you will, to bring fiber deeper into the community in order to leverage the service, or from a business owner perspective. The fibers generally, by and large, focus to business owners, small, medium, large, doesn't matter to us, but that's where our focus has been. So we've done a lot of work on the 422 corridor coming into the borough, for those business parks that are just on the outskirts. We continue to look at those opportunities, as you know that they are coming. So if you know business is coming and you need that idea of what infrastructure is available, whether it's each one of you as councilors, or certainly the mayor or Justin can reach out to me, and I can say, we have this capability at this particular location for business purposes.
But not so much for homeowners?
I mean, I think we certainly rival that service. I think our platform, our infrastructure, in terms of how we deliver the service, obviously is different between the two providers, but certainly the other, our other product benefits, I think greatly outweigh our competitor, if you will. So, I hope that answers your question, and be happy to talk to you offline, too.
Yeah, I have a, kind of a similar question as far as residential. Like, you're also talking to residents and residential customers of yours. So I'd like to know what the plans are, and we don't have a choice here in Pottstown for internet and cable providers. So, what are your plans for residential use?
So, I mean, over a 10-year period, we've upgraded the network with that question. So we made that capital investment. We wouldn't be able to make that capital investment, and you see that, sort of, the benefits of those would be, you know, anything from the initial launch of On Demand, if you remember that, HD service, you have VOD, now you have the X1 platform, you have greater bandwidth for internet speed. So we've done internet increases 14 out of 15 years at no cost for our residential customers. We're gonna start to have streaming products, so we have Xfinity Flex right now for anybody that's just a broadband-only customer of ours. So all of those investments, from a capital perspective over a 10-year window, have produced those product benefits and results. So we see that the network is robust here. You are fortunately the prior operator, and certainly us, combined together, you already had a great network to begin with. You know, the community is not left behind, if you will, and quite frankly, it's the opposite. So, we see a robust opportunity here from a residential and business perspective. We continue to make the investments. You see it. I'm sure you see it on our commercials, or the, yeah, the circulars that you get in your mailboxes on a routine basis. But you see the capital investment that's been made over a decade. I think the byproduct of that would be the products and services that are available to you as, whether you're a residential customer or business customer.
And are you looking at, and I don't know if this is your area, but different options as far as lowering the cost, like being able to pick certain channels and things like that? Right now, it's very, you don't have a lot of options for that.
So I think we retooled last year based on customer feedback, not only just here in Pottstown, but frankly, in the greater Philadelphia area. I think there are more options available to you, either a price point option, in addition to what channels you may be watching. I mean, you are starting to see a shift of the consumer base going to a more of a broadband approach and streaming their service. So Flex is one opportunity for that, as an option to reduce cost, if you want to watch your television in that capacity. Some people do, and some people don't. It's certainly up to you as what is your preferred method of delivery of getting content, right? So content is what it's all about. You will see in the coming months, other streaming services that we're gonna provide to our customer base, so whether you're existing customer, new, whether you're broadband, you know, or not, you know, you'll see that. I think that's a to-be-determined product that we're working on. So I think if, you know, if there are, excuse me, specific issues, or you have residents that have concern about price, we're willing to work with you and try to find the right match that fits their need, their price point, and what service we have available to offer.
And one more question, sorry.
No?
In your store, could somebody come in and go over different options?
Sure.
As far as their services?
Absolutely.
You could walk in and do that, they can discuss that with you, you don't have to call?
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll allow people to come through the store.
Thank you. I will say, I've had much better experience going to a store rather than trying to call. That's why I was asking. Thank you.
Yeah, happy to answer.
Anyone else? I do have one, and this is asked of me often. I talk about our PCTV. How many homes does that go into?
So, PCTV is an interesting, I would call it somewhat of an old-school delivery of access channels, correct? So we have, right now, there's three available. There's Government Access, Education Access, and then what we would most traditionally call Public Access. We actually broadcast that, those channels, outside of the borough footprint, the municipal boundaries of the borough. That has been historically what's happened here.
Right.
I don't see that necessarily changing too greatly, at least, at least on the Education Access side, and certainly the Government Access side. Many of your neighboring communities have worked in some way, shape, or form with Gus, school districts alike, in terms of content, what content's to be available. You know, I think Gus is relooking at that, too, given all the factors of what it costs to produce content. From a household perspective, I don't have an exact number, but, you know, I would argue it's reaching two or three school districts, more than a dozen municipalities in the, I call, greater Pottstown area. So it's not just dedicated to Pottstown borough.
Right.
Most of our municipalities and school districts, the Government Access channel, for example, is municipal-specific, right? The municipality wants it just to stay within the confines of the borough. You'll see that very common across Southeast Pennsylvania, the communities that I represent, which is about 135, that's the most common delivery method. Education Access is just what it is. It goes to the sending municipalities of the school district. Those are the two most common methods. Here, given the history between the borough, the company, and PCTV, it's been broadcast outside of those confines.
So are we talking 50,000 homes, 100,000 homes?
I wouldn't want to guess homes passed, I just don't, I don't want to be inaccurate. If you had to do the math, about a dozen communities, I would say minimally two school So, you know, I'd be happy to get back to you, or certainly to...
Yeah, curious. It's one of the questions that I'm asked often.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
And I really don't know.
Sure.
There's nothing else? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
And just so everyone's aware, the agreement that Mr. Jeter referenced, that we've been negotiating over the past year or so, we'll be, we think it's in a position to bring it to council on Monday night, so we'll make sure that we send that to you in advance of that meeting. We went over the highlights of that before, but I just want to let everyone know that that's not an exclusive agreement. So we get a lot of questions about that, too, is, you know, why don't we have this service, or this provider, or that provider? The answer is that we can, it's that they haven't been interested in coming here. So, by signing the contract, it doesn't mean that we can only get Comcast cable in the future, but we have yet to see interest from that. The agreement would also be a 10-year agreement. It would include a 5% franchise fee back to the municipality, which averages somewhere between $350,000, $400,000 a year. And then, would also include a $65,000 franchise grant for communications upgrades in our meeting rooms. And for the relocation of PCTV.
Anything else?
Yeah, so Monday night, we've advertised a public hearing for 7:30. So the public will have a chance to provide any comment they have, either concerning the franchise agreement, or the performance of Comcast over the last 10 or 12 years. And the ordinance has also been advertised, so if you guys are ready, you can actually vote on the ordinance, which will approve the new franchise agreement. So we're kind of got everything in lockstep, if you're ready to go with it. And Mr. Jeter, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We have someone from the census. We doing that this year?
Eight days. Eight.
I'm so glad you're here.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor, how are you? I had the privilege of meeting with Ms. Stephanie a couple of weeks ago. It was so exciting. It was nice enough to come all the way to my office in North Carolina. Thank you for coming. Stephen, do you mind doing the PowerPoint? So, just kind of follow up on the question.
Oh, good evening. Thanks for inviting me back again. My name's Tricia Reedy Jones. I'm partnership specialist for Montgomery County with the US Census Bureau, and currently the IT helper, and also the recruiting assistant. Stephen Basinfelder will do a little, one of the slides, talking about the jobs and the fact that we're still hiring. So, the Census Day, April 1st, is 28 days from now. When I first started this job in September, it was like 100 days, and then it was ticking down, ticking down. Now, less than a month. And you can complete your census starting next week. So the mailings go out March 12th through the 20th. So who in here is going to complete their census next week? Right? And if you didn't raise your hand, hopefully by the end of this presentation, you will be on board. So the census is easy, it's safe, and it's important. It's easy because it takes less than 10 minutes to respond, and we're only asking nine questions. Nothing controversial, only very simple, name, phone number, date of birth, type of home you live in, whether you own or rent, race, ethnicity, gender, marital status, and then everybody living in your home and those same demographics. It's safe, and I like to do these presentations and talk about all of the cybersecurity measures and everything that is protected, but I think what really hits home is that your personally identified information is not available for 72 years. So most of us will not be around 72 years from now. Currently, the 1940 census and prior is available, and you can look and you can see your family that has been counted in the census, but your individual data will not be available for 72 years. So not only do we have all these cybersecurity measures in place, but the information is protected for that length of time. It is very important because it determines $675 billion nationally for the next 10 years. So whatever count we come up with, counting all the heads in the United States and in the territories, we are stuck with for 10 years. So if we have an undercount, that's money that we're then losing for the community. It also affects our voice in Congress. It determines the number of seats in the House of Representatives. So if we lose population, we can lose seats. I know in 2010, Pennsylvania lost two seats. Pennsylvania also was second worst at undercount, right behind Texas. And we are not gonna be last this time around. We are working hard in Montgomery County, at least. Pottstown is rocking and rolling. Mayor Stephanie has been posting on social media, the school board is on board, reaching out to their parents and the kids. Peggy Lee Clark has been doing an amazing job, so lots of people in Pottstown getting the word out about the importance of the census. So the goal is to count everybody once, only once, and in the right place. And if you remember that April 1st date, that's considered Census Day, that's a determining date. Not only is it a goal of ours to kind of march towards Census Day, but it's a determining date for tricky situations. So if you have a child that is split between two households, and they're 50/50 split, where are they staying on Census Day? That's where they would be counted. If you are lucky enough to have a home here and in Florida, you're considered a snowbird, and you spend your time 50/50, you would count yourself where you are on Census Day. So April 1st is kind of our cutoff, as well as...
Make sure you're here in Pottstown.
Yes. If you're on vacation, April 1st, you need to get back home.
Yes, somebody the other day asked me, well, I have a friend who's going away for a month. When can they complete their census? And I said, well, even though they're not here on Census Day, we are collecting the information through July 31st, so they're not gonna miss out on their opportunity. They will get their information in the mail. We also have Statistics in Schools, and Statistics in Schools is a curriculum that can be used within the school district. And this week is Statistics in Schools Week. So the Pottstown School District is participating in varying levels. I know one of the elementary schools is looking at doing a school-wide event. I'm still waiting on those details, but I know that Mr. Rodriguez has been pushing it out to all of the principals, trying to get them involved in the Statistics in Schools program. So you will be able to respond either online or by phone. When do the mailings come out?
Next week.
Okay, next week, March 12th through the 20th. You will get your first, it's called an invitation, but really it's just a letter in the mail with official census envelope, and there will be a web address and a phone number. So you can respond either online or by phone. You can see, after a couple reminders, if you don't respond, you will get a paper questionnaire. So some people just want the paper, and that's okay. They can choose to do that. However, the more mailings that go out, the more it's costing taxpayer dollars. So we're really encouraging people to respond, respond even before Census Day. And then if you still don't respond, after April 27th, that's when the enumerators come and knock on your door. So, self-response. So this is the low-response map. Any area in bright red is showing a 25% or higher non-response. So you can see Pottstown has two census tracts, and both census tracts are higher than 25% non-response from 2010 census and the American Community surveys that are sent out. Norristown and Patfield, Lower Marion, all other areas of red. So our goal this time is to make that as light as we can. The lowest percentage in Montgomery County was 12%. So those areas that are showing the very light colored, almost white, was a 12% undercount. The Commissioner's Office ran some data, and with just a 5% undercount, Montgomery County will lose $72 million per year. So that's 25% or higher. They ran the numbers at 5%. I can't do that math in my head, probably can't do it on a calculator either, but that's a lot of money. a lot of money. So here are the two census tracts in Pottstown. You can see one census tract is 27.5% undercount. And I just, at the bottom, pulled out some statistics. I know I talked about this in October, because this is just what kind of hit home for me the most, is the percentage of children living in poverty. And so those statistics are so important because we want to make sure that this funding that's coming into the community is for programs for children, programs for older adults, programs for redevelopment. So the funding that comes in is not just for the roads, it's not just for the libraries, it's for anything that gets governmental funding. And when you see all of these children living in poverty, you want to make sure that there's services and funding to support them. And then the sense, the second census tract is 25.5% undercount, so a little bit better. And you can see some of the demographics that are there, but the 25% or higher is still very critical. We also have another operation, which I think is probably one of these slides coming up, but I will talk about it now, called Mobile Questionnaire Assistance. So not only can people respond online, by phone, or by paper, there will be census takers out and about at events. I really wish that the operation started for March 20th. That would have been amazing and lots of fun. But it's not going to start until April 1st. So there's a couple events that are going to be a test in Montgomery County, and then it's going to be rolled out April 1st, and it's going to be initiated in low-response areas, so like Pottstown. So any event that's coming up in Pottstown, please make us aware of that so that we can send staff, they're called CRRs, Census Response Representatives, and they will be able to collect census data on the spot. So jumping back to the hard-to-count demographics, so between looking at the Rome data and then our Mobile Questionnaire Assistance Program, we really want to capture these hard-to-count demographics. So we've been working a lot to get the word out to parents, to make sure they're counting their children, to college students, to people living in poverty, to renters, to senior citizens. The list goes on and on, but we use these statistics and look at the demographics to be able to tailor our outreach.
Hi, my name is Steve. I'm a recruiting assistant with the 2020 census. So as you can see, we are still hiring to help, to have people work with the census to go, as you, the kind of position you probably imagine, people knocking door to door administering the census. So as Tricia was saying, by March 12th, you'll be receiving the invitation to complete the census, and over the next month, we're really going to be hammering it down, giving out those postcards to keep making sure that you complete the census. What happens after that, if you don't do the census within that timeframe, we're going to send a lot of people out of the neighborhoods, everywhere across the country, everywhere across Montgomery County, and we're going to be knocking on doors and helping you do the census on the spot. We'll also be doing the MQA. So as you can see, we're paying, it pays $27 an hour to do that in Montgomery County. There's no hidden catch to that, that's not quota-based, that's not response rates. If you work the hours, you'd be getting paid $27 an hour, plus 57 and a half cents for every mile you drive is the federal standard, so your gas is covered as well. It is, it's pretty flexible hours, part-time work. You can choose the amount of hours you want to work and when you want to work them, but we do preference people that are available in the evenings and in the weekends. It's, you know, it's local work, so you'd be working local, so if you're hired in Pottstown, you'd be working in or around Pottstown, not getting shipped out to the other side of the county. It's, it's paid training, weekly pay, local training. You only have to be 18 and older to apply, and in most cases, a U.S. citizen, but we preference people who are multilingual, especially in, you know, communities where English is not the primary language spoken. And there are exceptions. If you're not a U.S. citizen, but we have a language need for a certain area, and there's nobody from our primary pool who's a good applicant, you will start dipping into those other pools where people do have that language match. So we've been recruiting for quite a while now, and we're kind of getting toward the end of the recruiting process, but we're still taking applications. We're doing the selections now for the next couple, next several weeks, really. And in Pottstown alone, in one of the Pottstown tracts, we still need about 30 or 25 applications in the recruiting goal, and the adjacent tracts in Stowe and Lower Pottsville, we need additional 10 to 20. So we still need a lot of people working with the, you know, working with the census in Pottstown. As you saw, that 25% undercount, I mean, there's a lot of ways to try to get that number as close as possible to what the actual population count is, and having people working with us, knocking door to door, is a way to do it. Thank you.
So the time to prepare is now? We're a week away. So blasting your social media with census information is probably the easiest way to get the word out now. You can come up with your own posts, you can be creative, you can share the Census Bureau information, there's fun, exciting facts that are posted every day, feel free to share that. You can take print materials that are available on 2020census.gov, and then under the Partners tab and Outreach, you can filter for all kinds of print materials by language, by demographics, print those out and take them to any meetings you're going to, and just make it a point of conversation in every meeting, whether it's your faith-based community or a civic association, or you're just out and about enjoying the restaurants on High Street, just making census part of your, your conversation. And if you have any questions, there's my email. Feel free to take a picture of that. You can email me at any time, and that's the web address, the 2020census.gov/partners. And with that, again, just another reminder about following us on social media, and we look forward to everybody responding either next week or the following week when you get your invitations in the mail. So before I open it up to questions, how many people are responding to the census when they get their first invitation in the mail? Wonderful. Are there any questions?
I have a question. My dog's not raising his hand.
Can you put your slide back? Are you waiting for the paper?
No.
Okay. Waiting for the paper.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, how, for one person, how much does that one person get for the census? You know what I mean? Like?
Like how much does each person worth?
Yes.
So there's, there's varying levels. It's approximately 2,000. I've seen anywhere from 1,700 to 2,500. In the middle, it's about 2,000 per person, per year. So each person does have a value.
Real fast, I forgot to add, if anybody is interested in applying, or you know anyone who's interested in applying, come and see me. I have literature I can give you, I can answer any questions, give any more information out. I can actually help you start applying. I'm going to hang around the meeting a bit, I'll be outside, so it's not that prolonged the whole meeting, but yeah, I'll be around for a bit if you have any questions.
Any other questions?
Nope, I really do appreciate you coming out. Thank you again.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Yes.
Great. Okay, 11 is a proclamation or a safe digging month. Oh, the mayor.
Mayor.
Safe digging month?
So this month is Safe Digging Month. Engineers, designers, excavators, and homeowners work to keep the pace and make sure that we have safe diggings by dialing 811. Pennsylvania 811 receives more than 1 million notification requests and transmits more than 7 million notifications, providing protection to utility companies and their employees, customers, and citizens of the borough. So I have resolved that Pennsylvania 811's Safe Digging Month. This says April of 2020. Is it April 2020? Okay, I apologize. This is for April. Yes, all right. So April is Safe Digging Month. Thank you.
Great. Okay, the COPS Grant, Community Oriented Policy, Policing Services. Chief?
The COPS Grant is a, it's a federal grant through the Department of Justice, and it will pay 75% of the salary and benefits for two officers for a period of four years. So we're going to be asking your approval to submit our application with the hopes of getting it later in the year, be able to use that grant to replace two officers. So it could save considerable amount of money.
Okay. All right, and then we'll list that for action for Monday evening. 13, we have to deal with a resignation.
Yes, so this is the resignation of Janice Lee as the Borough Treasurer, and we need to do this at our meeting on Monday night so that we can replace her with the new Borough Treasurer.
New Borough Treasurer. Okay, we'll list that for Monday. And 14 is the appointment of a new Borough Treasurer.
Okay, so we're recommending that you appoint Ann Milecki, our new Finance Director, as the Borough Treasurer.
All right. List that. 15, appointment of Deputy Tax Collector. Tax Collector. Delegate. Ann will be...
This one? Okay, yeah, so this will be the same thing, recommending Ann Milecki, the Finance Director.
All right. If there are no questions, we'll do that Monday evening. 16, the resolution, the Tax Collection Committee. We need a delegate alternate.
So we're recommending that Ann Milecki is the delegate, Marley Boone, our Accounting Administrator, is the first alternate voting delegate, and Justin Keller, Borough Manager, the second alternate voting delegate.
And we'll address that Monday. 17, a CDBG application. This is for High Street Street Lighting, Phase Two or Three? Two.
Two. Yeah, so if you recall, last year, we applied for a community development block grant to install the LED lighting on the 200 block of High Street and part of the 300 block of High Street. You can see now, if you drive down there tonight, that most of that is in and replaced with new LED lighting. We like to seek a grant to extend that from, all the way down from Franklin to Washington Street with 17 additional LED light standards. This also kind of meshes well with some of the work that we're doing on the 400 block to improve the appearance and safety of that block as well.
Okay.
Borough match would be any engineering related to this project. We don't expect that there will be any engineering needed because we are able to mount the poles on our existing foundations, so we might just need them to review that. But there should be very little cost to the borough, other than our staff time to install the fixtures and the poles.
Okay. If there are no questions, we'll list that for approval. 18, King Street Crossing.
All right, so we're finally at a point with the King Street Crossing where PennDOT is just about ready to approve our highway occupancy permit. And if you recall, this project was funded with $80,000 from a Monco 2040 grant for the installation of strip pedestrian crossing, Refuge Island, and ADA accessible improvements to promote safe access between the Culbriquetale Railroad, Manatoni Green Miniature Golf Memorial Park, and the Carousel. Since these are, improvements aren't located within a PennDOT right of way, the borough will be responsible to maintain these improvements in the future. This PennDOT requirement is similar to our current arrangement with our traffic signals. So PennDOT installs and pays for the traffic signals, and then we have to take over the maintenance of the signals in perpetuity. So should the HOP application be approved, we would seek council approval in advance to enter into this maintenance agreement with PennDOT. Having the agreement signed is a requirement for the HOP approval.
Okay. We'll list that for Monday. 19, McDonald's Land Development.
Sure, I think everyone knows that McDonald's up on Shoemaker Road at 100 is undertaking a rebuild of its existing restaurant. McDonald's had gone to the zoning hearing board, received a number of variances granted by the board, so the project or the new project would be compliant with the borough's zoning ordinance. At the February meeting, McDonald's came to the Planning Commission and presented their plan and had discussion with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed in detail the Cedarville Review Letter from February 13th. McDonald's indicated their willingness to comply with the engineer's comments that were outlined in that letter. The Planning Commission really discussed, Dan, and you can jump in, two main items. One was the safety concern to make sure that there is a sidewalk that runs along Shoemaker Road that connects to Route 100. Initially, I think there was some concern whether or not the sidewalk could be installed, but I think we're beyond that. I think McDonald's has agreed that the sidewalk is needed and they can put that in.
I think we learned that that is under ordinance. It had to be done.
It's, it's under ordinance, it's a requirement, but there was concerns whether it could be constructed, but I think, I think we've been able to get through that.
Right.
The other issue that was discussed by the Planning Commission concerned the requirement for the number of trees for the project. The Planning Commission recommended to the borough that the, one of the conditions of approval be that the borough accept a payment in lieu of the trees. I think there's 20 that are short under the plan. The going rate is $500 per tree. The Planning Commission voted to recommend council to approve the plan, subject to compliance with the engineer's review letter, the fee in lieu of tree payment, the installation of the sidewalk. And there was also some discussion, I think, about the requirement of fencing. The Planning Commission preferred to see landscaping as opposed to fencing. That was the gist of the meeting.
That's about everything.
I know that McDonald's is here tonight, so I don't want to steal their thunder. So if there's anything else they want to add, I did receive a letter from their attorney with respect to, I guess, some information that was talked about. I don't know if you guys want to address that tonight? No? Okay.
Any questions from council? Here are none. We'll list that for action for Monday evening.
Okay, we'll come up with a motion, then. It'll be on your agenda with the conditions of approval. I'll send it out to the applicant so they can look at it to make sure they're satisfied with it, and it'll be listed.
I do have a question.
Sure, sure.
When they originally built, how come there was no sidewalk required then?
You know, I, I can't tell you why, but I suspect that at the time, there was no issues with pedestrian traffic and crossing at that intersection. I think that restaurant, Mike, was built probably in the late 90s. The intersection really wasn't as busy or developed as it is today, and obviously, there's been a lot more focus from PennDOT to want to make sure even these busy intersections where you would think maybe you don't want pedestrians, pedestrians are crossing anyway. So at this point, they want to make sure that it's as safe as possible. So, so everything that's been improved up at that area is really focusing on pedestrian safety, even though it's probably not the greatest place to cross, but they self to cross somewhere, so. So that's, that's the best thing I can answer at the time. I don't know that anybody really wanted to encourage people to cross back then, given the constraints that were there.
And I'll just add now, with the closed-loop project, that there were, there are new traffic signals that are being installed up there, along with new controllers, the pedestrian push buttons and the pedestrian signal heads, along with new ADA ramps and stripings. So it's, 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 the intersection is set up a lot better to handle pedestrians. I mean, it's, it's not the most comfortable intersection to try to cross, but it's definitely much improved since the 90s.
Okay, so that'll be listed. 20 is the Car Wash Facility Land Development.
Sure, that was also discussed at the February Planning Commission meeting. This is also along Shoemaker Road. It's essentially a combination of two existing parcels that are both improved. One of the buildings will come down. A car wash facility will be constructed, and the whole configuration of the two lots will occur, so it'll really, looks like a nice, nice car wash facility that will be placed there. Planning Commission did review the plan, reviewed the Cedarville Letter, which was Planning Commission did review the plan, reviewed the Cedarville Letter, which was from February, reviewed waiver requests that were received by the applicant engineer. Those waivers, I believe you have those, are on a January 30th letter from Bowler. Planning Commission, essentially, based upon the applicant's agreement with the conditions and the comments of the borough engineer, recommended a approval of that land development, subject to compliance with the comments of the borough engineer. There was also an issue with the placement of trees. I believe there were nineteen that would be required that they really can't place or satisfy. So Planning Commission recommended, one of the conditions was a payment in lieu of the necessary trees. I don't know if you have any comments or questions about the project, but the Planning Commission seemed to think it was an improvement. At one point, the plan actually showed an access off Mako Street, which is a private street that runs parallel to the project. They abandoned that idea. The accesses will be right off Shoemaker Road, so it'll be dedicated in or out accesses for purposes of what they're doing there. It looked like a very nice project.
Yeah, it does.
And I don't know if there's an applicant here tonight on that as well. Yes? Okay. Anything you want to add, sir?
If there's any questions we can answer, but...
Okay. Hearing nothing else, we'll list that for action Monday evening. Twenty-one is the Hess Lot, a piece of property that the borough happens to own at the moment.
Yeah, so I'd like to bring council up to speed on where we're at with this property. So over the past eighteen months or so, the boroughs received several development requests for property that the borough owns at 190, 193 South Hanover Street, also known as the Hess Lot, located at the intersection of College Drive and Hanover Street. It's about 22,000 square feet, so just under half an acre, fairly small lot. If council is interested in entertaining development on this property and conveying it to a developer to be improved, there are really two conveyance options that are available to the borough. First option is the standard method of conveyance, which consists of the borough putting the property up for auction or out to bid, which, under the borough code, mandates that the borough has to award the project to the highest bidder. That can mean that the project that's coming in there may not be the highest and best use, or the use that produces the most tax revenue, or the use that is an appropriate use, given that that is a gateway location. Again, the constraint, you know, with the borough selecting it, borough council selecting it, is that they would have to select the highest bidder, so whoever pays the most. That would also not prevent it from falling into the hands of a nonprofit, which would mean that the borough would not ever see tax revenue on that property. The second option available would be to convey the property to an economic development entity who would not necessarily have to accept the highest bid, but rather could select the project that will provide the best fit for the neighborhood and the most positive impact to the community and the borough. This is done very frequently with the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority for various contaminated properties that they take title to during remediation efforts. And a lot of times, those properties come from the county, or a municipality, or other governmental entity. So it's for this reason that staff is recommending that this property be conveyed to PAID for disposition, while PAID would work with council and staff to draft the RFP, review applications, and other parts of the process. So if you recall, PAID was originally created with the purpose of facilitating property transactions for the borough in the circle of progress area. You know, in fact, PAID has a specific purpose of promoting economic investment and development in the borough of Pottstown. As farther expressed through the Articles of the Corporation, the corporation may buy, sell, or otherwise acquire, hold, own, use, manage, improve, develop, lease, rent, mortgage, or otherwise encumber, and to exchange or transfer real property and personal property of every kind in the interest herein is necessary auxiliary incidental or convenient to the needs and the purposes of the corporation. So that just kind of gives you a very broad background on the bylaws and the covenants that PAID is held by. So we have two documents that we passed out to council tonight. One document is a draft, a very early draft of an RFP. We still need to make some tweaks to this, but I think that the bones of it are generally where we need it to be. We would also recommend that we engage with a, engage in an agreement with PAID and Borough Council to make sure that if council does want to convey this to PAID for disposition, that everything is understood upfront before any other decisions are made. So here, the second document we have are guidelines for council's consideration. And, you know, one guideline is that PAID would draft an RFP for consideration of Borough Council, so you have that first draft here tonight, and we'll take suggestions on how we can improve that. Then at some point, we would ask council to offer their feedback and put a time limit on that, just to make sure that we're conveying the development interests of council to the developer that might eventually acquire this property. Then the borough solicitor would review the RFP. PAID would be responsible for marketing the property, issuing the RFP, and selection of the highest and best use for the property based on the priorities that are established in the scope of work. Before conveyance of the property from the borough to PAID, all responses to the RFP will be shared with Borough Council, so you have a chance to weigh into them. And then, you know, PAID will be responsible for the final selection, but the successful project may not be the highest bidder for the project. So that's one of the things that we talked about. We want to make sure it's a good fit. We want to make sure it's a good fit for the neighborhood, and that generates tax revenue. PAID, to do this, PAID is requesting a compensation of ten percent of the sale price. You know, right now, we have an appraisal from 2011 where the property was appraised at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that kind of gives you an idea of maybe what the commission price would be. And I think that for the borough, it, you know, it takes it out of the staff's hands and really allows, you know, PAID, who's more qualified, to really market this property, you know, write the RFP, and while staff can focus on other issues that are of importance in the borough. So I think it's a very reasonable compensation to pay, but obviously, that can be up for discussion. So the priorities under the scope of work are ranked by point totals. So out of a hundred points total, the highest point total is forty points. So that would be, forty points would be given to the desired end use. So an end use that provides annual property tax revenue for the redeveloped parcel. That's worth a lot of points. Projection of the number and types of jobs created, and the nature of the land use, whether it's commercial, mixed use, what those percentages will be. And then there's also a preference for proposals that incorporate a recreation-related end use. If you recall, at one point, the borough took a grant from the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation to do the environmental remediation work on the property. So one of the caveats of taking that grant was that it was going to be developed for recreation use. Unfortunately, the results of the environmental assessment came back and said that without further remediation, it cannot be used for recreational or residential use. So we've been in discussions with the Health and Wellness Foundation about what other types of compatible recreation uses might be achievable through this development. Could it be something like an outfitter, or something that would somehow tie into the trail users? And they seem to find that acceptable. So if we're able to get a desired end use that checks all these boxes for tax revenue, you know, decent jobs, and recreation-related end uses, it would be a win-win, and the recreation uses incorporated would save the borough thirty thousand dollars that we wouldn't have to pay back. Second highest ranking item on here, worth thirty points, is context-sensitive design. So this is the site plan, the building site architecture that's compatible with the surroundings, nearby historic structures, compatible with surrounding land uses, impact to the surrounding neighborhood, and we'll be asking for building elevation site plans as a part of that review process. Third on the list is financing. We have that worth fifteen points right now, so we want to make sure that the developer is able to secure financing for the proposed project, as well as secure tenants and ensure completion of the project. Implementation experience is worth twenty points, so I guess actually that's the third one, financing is the fourth. So implementation experience, we want an experienced developer to do this project, so we want to know what their experience has been in other projects, what their capacity would be to implement this project, and also any experience with environmental remediation. So those are the outlines, and what we're asking council for at this point is to authorize our solicitor to work with PAID's solicitor to draft an agreement for conveyance to PAID if that is the direction the council wants to go in.
Okay. Any questions, council?
I think it's a great idea, because, I mean, it's a small parcel, but a very prominent one, it's one of the first things you see when you cross the river, so it's, you could get stuck with a gas station or something like that, which we don't want.
It's our southern gateway. First thing people will see coming in from Chester County. Okay, list that for approval. Twenty-two, zoning variance for 434 Johnson Street.
Yeah, so the next few items on the agenda are applications that have been filed with the zoning hearing board. The first is for 434 Johnson Street. This is an existing single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting zoning relief to convert the existing dwelling into a two-unit apartment building. That's one of the variances. Right now, the ordinance prohibits the conversion of a single family into apartments. The second component of the variance related to the conversion is that one of the apartments that would be created is only 700 square feet, and the ordinance requires a minimum of 800 square feet. So that is the request of the applicant to the zoning hearing board. As we've discussed before, council really has three options. Council can allow the zoning hearing board to hear the case and make the determination. Council can vote to support an application and submit a letter of support. Council can vote to deny the, or not support the application and oppose it, and send a letter or a counselor to the hearing to testify, depending on council's preference. So that's what the applicant's asking for 434 Johnson Street with respect to the relief.
Questions?
And I think that's Don's word, right?
Hearing none, we'll list that for action Monday. What are we listing it for? Just possible action?
Yeah, possible, or...
Sorry?
That's your award?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation for that award?
We're going to let this go to zoning.
As is?
Okay.
So we'll write it that way.
Okay.
And we won't have it listed then. There's no reason to take any action.
Okay. Change that. Twenty-three, 431 King Street.
So again, this is another existing single-family dwelling. Another request to convert or change the single-family dwelling into two separate apartments. According to the application, it says at one point this was a two-unit, and it was converted back to a single. That is technically irrelevant for purposes of the zoning hearing board. That makes no real difference to them, what it was before. It is now, and the ordinance prohibits a conversion. So they're seeking a variance to turn one unit into two units.
Okay. 431 King.
Yeah, it's me. Actually, in this case, I'd like to write a letter of opposition in this case, because, I mean, I think the building itself is a twin, it's only like 1,900 square feet. Yeah, I kind of looked on the interior of it on Zillow, and it really would be conducive to two units, and that's why we have zoning. It's really, it's to prevent stuff like this.
So your recommendation is to oppose?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll list it that way for Monday evening. We do have an add-on, and that's for 17 North Hanover.
Yes, and that just came in. Yeah, that, excuse me, actually just came in today. It is seeking a variance, and the application was somewhat difficult to understand, but it says the property, present use is retail, but it's vacant. The proposed use is direct retail, direct service, but that's not necessarily saying what it is. But basically, they're looking to allow for a direct retail or direct service, but under the ordinance, they can't do that unless they have 1,500 square feet on the first floor, and there's only 1,250 square feet. So as I understand it, and we'll get you more information for Monday night, but they're looking for a variance to allow the conversion to a direct retail or direct service, even though there's only 1,250 square feet on the first floor, according to the application. It's also been acknowledged that whatever direct service or direct retail that will be put in would require a conditional use. So they'll be coming to you at some point, if they get their zoning relief, for a conditional use. So I apologize for the vagueness of this. The application wasn't very clear, and it was just received today. So this is a request for zoning relief to vary that minimum requirement for the square footage on the first floor. But again, depending on the use, it'll come to you for a conditional use, so you'll know what's going in there. But this is essentially going to be a two-step process for them, given the zoning ordinance requirement.
And Ryan, that's also yours.
Please.
Yes, this was the former Pineda office.
Pineda?
And so there were, so what we found, I mean, this is kind of cleaning up something that wasn't found before. And what we found was that that property had been used as a direct retail use previously, but because of the floor size on the first floor, they should have actually had a variance for that use that could have ran with that direct retail use. However, there was never any variance that was applied for, so it's the same building owner, so now he's just trying to make everything right and, you know...
Okay, this is not the one that's on North Hanover, is that what you're referring to? And that'd be Lisa.
Yeah.
It's right at the alley.
Yeah, I know where, but it's not a word.
Seventeen North Hanover is the address.
Yeah, so it's Lisa.
Yeah.
So I would not have an opinion.
You want to take the weekend to look at it?
Well, I defer to Lisa, because that's her award.
It's my award.
Oh, it's your award?
No, I'm sorry.
I think I need a little more information.
It's really kind of unfair to not have enough. We just got it today, and the explanation is less than clear in my mind, so...
I mean, I know where it is, I know what was there, but I'd be curious of what they're going to do with it, considering it's short on square feet.
Take your time. Got it. It was kind of rushed. It just came in today, and the next zoning hearing board is the end of this month.
This would be your only chance to comment on it, because the hearing is going to be, I think, March 31st, so it won't be around before your next council meeting.
But you said they would have to come back anyway.
For a conditional use for the use, so it's almost the technical variance they need just to do anything with the property, so...
Right, so even if they went and got the variance, they'd still have to...
And they're actually coming to you guys as borough council for whatever they want to do.
All right.
If you want to talk to me or Keith about it, feel free to reach out, and we can discuss it.
Okay, that would be good.
So possible listing. Okay, I've got that one, that one. Twenty-four, rock the block. They need a variance?
No, they don't need a variance. They are asked for the fee to be waived, but yeah, so they're... They are asked for the fee to be waived, but yeah, so they're looking to rock the block on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, on the four hundred block of Chestnut Street between Franklin and Washington Street between six AM and four PM.
And this is one of our kind of legacy waves, right? We've done this over and over now.
I don't think we waived this before.
Oh, really? Okay. I think we did, didn't we? Did we not?
As far as I know, we don't waive fees except for Memorial Day.
The only thing we waive is... Right, yeah, and the Halloween parade because it's a Parks and Rec event.
Really? Okay, fine, I thought we did, yeah, okay. You guys know when we do stuff.
Because didn't Rita say something about some waived fees?
Like last year. Well, let us check into that and make sure, but obviously, if something that you feel strongly about, you know, assisting them in that way, then it's up for discussion.
That's probably one of the biggest pickup of the year.
Yeah.
I somewhat remember making a comment about, well, we because they're bringing, like, it was like hundreds of people in the queen of the borough, but I don't know.
Right.
Okay, so you're going to check into that?
Yeah, we will.
All right. Next, Bark for Life Beer Garden.
Yeah, so Bark for Life would like a beer garden in Memorial Park, April twenty-fifth, from one PM to five PM.
Okay. And are they serving it in dog dishes or...
I would hope not.
Oh, okay. There's no problem, we'll list that for Monday evening. Bark for Life. Twenty-six, Trails on Tap.
Trails on Tap is back, May thirteenth.
You want to mention that we're lucky we got it?
We are, we're lucky we got it and we're the first stop on Trails on Tap this year.
Yay!
We're only one of two other locations outside of Valley Forge Historic Park.
Yeah, they cut back the number of locations.
So they picked Pottstown, they picked Royersford, and they picked the Valley Forge Park crossing there at four twenty-two. So that would be from five to ten PM Wednesday through Thursday, and then from five to eleven PM Friday and Saturday and until ten PM on Sunday.
Okay, we'll list that one for approval. Twenty-seven, Pottstown Rumble Beer Garden.
Yep, another beer garden, Pottstown Rumble, on June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, in Memorial Park. The beer garden will operate from twelve PM to twelve AM and ceases at twelve AM when the play ceases.
Bark the Block is on the beer garden? I think we've got a lot of...
We're looking at that.
Okay, thanks.
So for the rumble, if there are no questions, we'll approve that Monday evening. Halloween Parade, they're requesting a waiver of street closure fees, and we have to explain again why that's permitted. It's just an internal transfer.
Yeah, I mean, it would essentially be an internal transfer from the Parks and Recreation Department to the general fund, so we're taking from one to pay the other, so...
So it would cost us more to pay staff to make the transfer than what we would collect in the fees. We'll list that for Monday. The second addition for this evening is, I guess, a presentation about Go Fourth?
Yeah, it's actually, it's not a presentation, they just, this is another late request that came in and I apologize, but they just dropped this off to us today. They would also like to have a beer garden there as well, on July fourth in Memorial Park. The festival would run from eleven-thirty AM to ten PM, features live music, food, family activities, twenty-minute duration of fireworks, finale at nine fifteen PM. We had an initial meeting with them and the police department, and we're comfortable with the way that they're arranging their beer garden this year, and we'll get Frank online here soon to take a look at their fireworks setup as well.
Okay.
Fine. Questions? Nope, we'll list that for Monday. Okay, board vacancies, HARB, we need one for a five-year term.
Yeah, we have Anthony Campbell that we would look to, he wants to be reappointed.
All right.
And we would wait until, actually wait until the April meeting to do the appointments on these, because we have a policy that we post them for thirty days before we fill them to make sure that if anyone's interested, they can apply. That's not a problem because their next HARB meeting isn't until after our council meeting in April, so that's not an issue.
And for the land bank, two, three-year terms?
Yes, so we're, we've asked the two members if they want to be reappointed, so we're waiting on letters from them. If anyone else is interested, they would be encouraged to apply as well.
Fine. Discussion, conditional use and zoning process.
So you're discussing or are you going to teach us?
Well, I don't know, but I guess we'll talk a little bit about zoning and conditional use, just to kind of get a better idea of exactly why we do what we do on the agenda and maybe this dovetails with the zoning applications that we talked about a couple items ago. Borough Council is the author or the legislator of the borough zoning ordinance. If you still have that big book, it has all the rules and regulations, and chapter twenty-seven is zoning, so that there's a big, big set of rules that develop or regulate the land use in the borough, from the zoning districts to the types of uses, to the setbacks, the size and heights of buildings, and all those kind of things are what zoning does. So once you write the ordinance, those are the rules. You also appoint the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board is an independent body who basically reviews, interprets the ordinance, and grants variances and special exceptions to applicants that file applications, which is what you guys review every month when we have them. So a variance is essentially something that the ordinance doesn't permit. It's a change to the ordinance, and in the cases tonight, I hate to use those as examples, but they were looking to convert an existing single-family dwelling into two units. It's not permitted by ordinance. So they would go to the zoning hearing board and they would present evidence to show why they needed that relief. The municipality's planning code essentially has five requirements that you have to satisfy in order to get a variance, it's called a hardship, and if you apply the law or apply those criteria very strictly, many times you would never get a variance. In the cases tonight, for example, they have the use of their property as a single-family home, so there's really no need for them to have two units. I mean, they have the right to use it exactly the way it was intended, and basically, for the most part, they want two units to potentially make more money or rent a unit out. So that doesn't qualify as a hardship, so it would be very difficult in my view for the zoning hearing board to find that they have a hardship to grant a variance. So what we talk about each month is what the folks are looking for and what relief they're seeking. The other thing a zoning hearing board can do is grant special exceptions. That's an easier legal standard to prove, and special exceptions are actually written into your zoning ordinance. And to give you an example, an adult daycare, you have provisions that is by special exception, or a bed and breakfast is by special exception. So if someone wants to do that, if they can meet the standards in the ordinance, the zoning hearing board has to grant them that relief. So you've done that through your legislative writings as to what you would permit as a special exception. Those are typically things that you want to have, but you also want to have some control over, which is why they have to go to the zoning hearing board. So the zoning hearing board is separate, it's a judicial body, it hears evidence, you don't control it, they make their own decisions, but you can participate in any of the hearings that you want. And I'm dovetailing that into the conditional use because we talked about that earlier as well. What is a conditional use? Well, there's very few times that you guys as council sit and actually are judges, but a conditional use is one of those. So the conditional use, when we have hearings, you know, people come in and say, I want to do this use or that use, the reason they're there is because your ordinance says a conditional use is required. In those cases, you're really like a zoning hearing board, and you're almost like a zoning hearing board listening to a special exception case. The only difference, the only standard that's different is that you're the judge and not the zoning hearing board. So in those cases, when we say we're going to deliberate an executive session under judicial deliberations, it's because you guys are judging the evidence to determine if they satisfied the conditional use standards. So conditional use and special exception are almost identical things, except you guys are the judge for a conditional use, the zoning hearing board is the judge for a special exception, and the only reason there's a difference is you guys wrote in the ordinance, it's either a special exception or a conditional use. So that's really the only inner relationship you guys have as council to what the zoning ordinance is. Everything else is our zoning officer or the zoning hearing board, and you guys have a right to participate. So I hope I was clear in my explanation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. You will typically see zoning applications on almost all of your agendas, and typically if you see those, that means the economy's pretty good and people are wanting to do things with their property, so that's usually a good sign if you're getting zoning appeals because hopefully they're things you want to see. Sometimes they might not be, but at least you're getting activity. So that's the topic, and if you have questions, let me know.
I have a question. So if there is a zoning board for an apartment, I mean, a house, and like today, they wanted to have their house as a two-unit house, and this is in Don's ward, and Don says, I want it to happen, and I say, no, I don't want it to happen. Can I, you know, go, although it's not in my ward? Can I, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Can I say that?
Well, the rules for the zoning hearing are pretty liberal, okay? So you can go and you can probably provide comment to the zoning hearing board on your opinion, but you might not necessarily, while you can provide your opinion, if you don't live near that property, they're probably not going to give what you say much weight, and if you didn't like the decision, you wouldn't be a party that could appeal that decision. Now, council, for instance, we just talked about the one in Ryan's ward, I guess, that Ryan said, we don't want that. So we'll write a letter to the zoning hearing board and say, council voted to oppose it. And if, in fact, the zoning hearing board granted that relief, borough council could appeal that decision to county court, because you're automatically a party to a proceeding. And residents can appeal too, Trinita, I mean, but they have to be living near the property. So Ryan could do that, if it's near his house, you're living in a different ward, likely you don't, it's not going to affect you whether it's a single unit or a two-unit. So personally, you couldn't get involved, but the borough could get involved, or a neighbor could get involved if it was a neighbor to the property that's under appeal.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks, Jac.
Thanks, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Professor.
Now, we all know. Okay, comments from citizens present.
You, excuse me, my business card for our foundation, the PAC Foundation, we are having our first annual banquet, April seventeenth at Sunnybrook. The cost is thirty dollars in-kind donation, three hundred dollars for a table. I had sent the mayor a letter, and she's going to try to get a table from the borough, which we would greatly appreciate. We're hoping to get a couple hundred people there, and I'd just like to say one thing, I'd like to say that thirty-seven years ago, the foundation started here on this key, and now we're up here, we're a nonprofit, we have a grant writer, if you know anywhere we can get foundations, it would be greatly appreciated. I have a very good, a very good board, which I am fortunate to be the president of, and our treasurer is in the corner back here, Marshall Levin Good, is our treasurer, and the guy, the gentleman in Sunnybrook, Chuck Galani, is a great guy, I had a two-hour meeting with him the other day, and Johnny Corson, everybody's digging in to help make our kids happy at Christmas, and we're not only going to be a Christmas party, when we get the stability and the finances, we could turn it into, we might do backpacks for kids for school, or whatever child needs, you know, I'm going to be working with some of the principals of the school to see how our foundation could be a big help in our community, because as each twenty you know up there, in twenty years, these kids could be running our community.
That's right.
And I'd just like to thank the mayor, Johnny Corson, Gus Tellis, and Police Chief Mick, because I have tapes made, if you want to see DVDs of the party. Joe Cerise is going to be the guest speaker at the banquet, but the thing I want to tell you is, there's not a child. If there was one child that said thank you at that party, there was a hundred. And without the police department's help of Pottstown and Lower Pottsville, we were able to get fifty-two bikes away, and Johnny Corson got the superheroes there, and what a day we had, it was a great day, and I appreciate everybody on my board and I appreciate the council, if you guys could take time out of your busy schedule to come to our banquet. We're going to have a business card table, we're going to have, where?
Twenty seconds left.
Okay, okay, sir, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ron Williams, please.
Good evening, how you doing? I just wanted to let you know, to remind you and to invite you to our seventh annual powwow on May second and third. I also need to ask everybody here to pray that we don't get any rain that night, you know?
Last year.
It was a great event last year, and then come around eight o'clock in the evening, it just started pouring and didn't stop. In conjunction with the powwow, my organization, Reflections of Turtle Island, last year we put on a number of presentations over at Art Fusion. They were videos about Native American issues, we had some speakers come in, we did some demonstrations, and we're going to continue a little bit of that over the coming year. Hopefully, we don't really raise a lot of money for powwow or for any other thing else. One of the things I do raise money for is to provide items to the standing rock, not the standing rock, I'm sorry, for the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in South Dakota. I literally had a U-Haul trailer and my van filled up on my last trip with blankets and jackets and heaters and anything else that I could accumulate or afford out of my own expenses to put in there, and it's always an exciting experience to go into the community and deliver these things, and it's tear-jerking to drive away to see the kinds of conditions that these folks have to endure on the reservation. I'll be talking to you a little bit more about this in the coming months because it...
Take your time.
I can't leave that environment without feeling like I am so terribly wealthy.
Take your time.
So anyway, one of the things we'll be doing here locally on April fifth is a event over at the Hill School, at the Arts Center, at the Hill School, we're going to be putting on an exercise. It's an experience for anybody and everybody to enjoy, not enjoy, to, at least to get an understanding of the plight of the Native American community and its experiences with Europeans from the inception of European, I call it invasion, they call it, most... from the inception of European, uh, I call it invasion, they call it, uh, most communities call it an incursion. Um, and it's an exciting experience.
Thirty seconds.
I, I want to invite, uh, April 5th at the Hill School Arts and Cultural Center.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Tracy Ann Dewall, please.
Hi, most of yous know I'm the, well, one of the animal control officers. On February the 20th, we had a dog that went into the Skooka River. The owner asked me because he could not be here today, the fire, Goodwill Fire Department Chief and the fire, uh, fire department for coming out for three days to rescue their dog, okay? So, Nova is in good shape, she is the nine-month-old, uh, King Corson. So, he wanted me to thank Borough for having the votes to have him come out and save his house.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Great.
Tom Hilton, please.
Uh, thank you. I had no intention to address council tonight, except something came up, which I feel I need to call to your attention. Uh, I was very involved in the writing of the zoning ordinance in 2003, and it was the overwhelming desire of council in 2003 that they didn't want to see any more single-family houses converted into apartments. And for that reason, we had a very high number, how many square feet we needed on the first floor to convert something into apartments, and it was 2,500 square feet, which is why the Vicklemans were here last month, because they were off by 100 square feet, and they made a big presentation about why they were doing this, and why it was in the best interest of the community and so forth. So, now I am seeing tonight that Council Proxler, uh, filling with the, with the philosophy of council, saying, "You want to convert a, a house that had been two units into one unit." Council's going to oppose that because we don't want to see the conversion, and yet on Johnson Street, a smaller house, and one of the apartments is going to be undersized, nobody's saying anything. So, I'm merely suggesting that you may see a lot of applications now, if, if this goes through, of plenty of people who would like to see conversions of single-family houses. Now, if council's changed its philosophy, they think it's in the best interest of the community to, to start allowing conversions again, that's fine, but I'm just suggesting you should think this over before just letting it float by. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further citizen comments?
No further. Oh, how about comments from council? Mike?
Uh, first, I'll start off with the Citizens Leadership Academy.
Oh.
The applications are now being accepted online on the borough's website. The first class is April 7th, Tuesday, they're going to be every Tuesday for 10 weeks, they run from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I do encourage as many people to sign up as you can because it is a wonderful learning experience that shows you how the borough operates. They pick the top 10 departments, I guess, and you get to see in depth how things, I mean, Peggy's been there from the beginning, Deb Penrod was in the very first class, I've been to all the classes. It's a great learning experience, and I highly recommend it to everybody. And secondly, following Mr. Williams, I don't know how many people knew him or know about him, but I grew up in the south end of town, and on Evans Street, the Camahoe family lived there. I, I'm, I've known them a very long time, and we just, ju, they're a Native American family, and, uh, they taught me a lot as a child, and recently Joe, uh, he was the son, just passed away, and he was a great Pottstonian. He loved Pottstown just as much as he loved his own family, so. I just wanted to mention that, you're welcome.
Okay.
Oh, I have one more thing. This, this weekend, Friday and Saturday, me and another councillor will be doing the Borough Boot Camp.
Oh, okay. Trinida?
So, in this Borough Boot Camp, are you going to be doing like, kind of cynics?
Man, I hope not.
Because I'm not going.
We're also sending our new finance director with you, too.
Oh, there you go, yeah, see? So, all three.
And Janice, and Janice.
Janice is driving us.
It's a great, big party.
What, are you the instructor, Janice?
Yes. Well, we want to hear a report when y'all get back from it.
If we get back.
Well, okay. Um, let's see, so it's, I'm up, I guess. So, um, Bethel AME Church is having, um, who's still marble, my senior, senior?
Yeah, there.
Maribor, thank you. Um, they having a luncheon, a community leadership, um, Saturday, March 28th, and it's at Spring Hollow Golf Club, Golf Club. It starts at 1:00, and, um, the luncheon is forty dollars, and the keynote speaker will be Aaron Beasley from, and he's a Pottstown native, former NFL player, and the, uh, award honorees will be John and Marlene Armando. So, I wanted to show you this, you can get into that. Also, Marlene's been busy in Pottstown because she is also an Exceptional Women's Award nominee, so she is going to be, um, getting an award for that, um, and that's going to be at the Y. I don't have any dates in here, I apologize about that, I'll bring that to you guys on Monday. Um, Go Fourth will have the Battle of the Bartenders, April 4th, and that'll be Joe Cerisi and, um, Tim Hennessy. So, um, come out and see how these, um, our state reps, um, do their bartending skills. Curious to see that one. Uh, let's see. Oh, and my fourth ward constituents, we will, we will win this war on wards, I'm just saying, we're going to get these T-shirts together, and we are going to beat some wards. Okay, so I'll be reaching out to some of my fourth ward constituents.
We'll be pretty in pink, just remember that.
We have an orange, it's matching my car. So, um, oh, and councillors, I don't know if you received this letter from Rupert Elementary School, you know I do the walk-in school bus, but they, um, are asking if we can come out and read to the kids, and that's, um, April 7th, okay? So, um, you have to RSVP by March 20th, alright?
Good.
I think.
Very good. Brian?
Oh, just after the joint school board meeting, I wanted to, or forgot to thank Dave Crable and the Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation for their contribution to the ULI study. That's a, that's a big one.
Yeah, that was nice.
They helped us a lot.
Lisa?
So, I don't have too much, but I do, um, I did attend the, in lieu of our meeting with Pottstown Community Action, we went bowling. I threw my back out going bowling, so I'm a little concerned what really is your planning. I need to start preparing for that.
I had two back surgeries last summer, I participated.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can get out of this chair tonight, but that's all I have.
At least it rolls.
That's right, just roll me.
Done. Nothing? There? Okay, I have nothing further to add, mediate and adjourned.